We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the special meeting to discuss the county's budget. And for those who are listening from the outside, our apologies for the brief delay, but we'll get underway now. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisogik territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisogik and Chipewa Nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaty's first nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as the stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Could I have a mover in a second or two to adopt the agenda for today? Councillors Burton and Carter.
Be it resolved that the agenda for the March 6, 2024 special meeting of Halliburton County Council be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof today? Hearing none, we'll move right into our items of business. And first, we would welcome Andrea Brown from the library to give us an update on the library's budget.
All right. Good afternoon, Warden Danielson, members of council and county staff. Thank you very much for inviting me here today to discuss the third draft of the Halliburton County.
Andrea, if I'm sorry to interrupt, if you could just pull your mic just a little bit closer.
Sorry about that.
Thanks.
Is that clear? Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Okay. So, following the county council budget discussion on February the 14th, the library board meeting had a meeting in the afternoon where a finance subcommittee was struck to discuss ways that we could decrease the county levy while having a minimum impact on public services. The subcommittee was at the, we met on Zoom on the Friday morning. And for partial attendance at the meeting, we also were joined by CAO Gary Dyke. So, we reviewed carefully the second draft of the budget. And I'll describe today the efficiencies that we were able to find in the budget. Blake, would you be able to put up the slide, the second slide there, please? There we go, perfect. So, in draft two of the library budget, the county tax requisition was $1,349,061. In the second draft of the library budget, the county tax requisition was reduced to $1,314,801. So, this is a reduction from our previous request by $34,260. Next slide, please, Blake. So, some of the places where we were able to come to a reduction include our book budget for print books where we decided to cut $3,000. The library board per diem and committee fees line was removed for this year. This is because we don't have any strat planning sessions where we need room rentals and lunch provided and that type of thing this year. We discussed the press reader subscription. So, this is the subscription that enables people here in the county to read newspapers and magazines from all over the world. So, we won't renew that when it comes due in fall 2024. So, we'll continue to enjoy it for part of the year in 2024, but that will be a savings of $7,000. As was presented to you in the county council version of the budget, at the February 14th meeting, there was a reduction in insurance costs. So, this appeared in the county budget, but not the library draft number two. And we also were, decided to significantly decrease the Dorset mileage budget. And we're able to do this because for the time being, we won't pair up the Dorset shifts with other shifts at other locations. So, this is something we do in Highlands East so that a staff member would have a full day of work by pairing two shorter shifts in one day and covering the mileage. So, this is, we decided not to do this for 2024. Can you move to the next slide, please, Blake? Okay. And so, another way that we were able to decrease the county levy ask was by deciding to charge things to our reserves budget that we had previously had in our operational fund request. So, air filter replacements for our smaller branches, that's $2,000. Our iPad replacements and other miscellaneous tech items. You can use reserves for that. This amount doesn't include the Dorset branch tech or replacement computers, which will also come from reserve funds. And because we have a healthy reserves budget at the present time, we will pause the automatic transfer to library reserves for the IT asset management plan. So, this is a $6,000 amount that we typically put into reserves every year. So, when we need to make a very large purchase, like for new photocopiers, for example, we have saved up each year in order to make those purchases. We, in addition to this, we will be undertaking a library staffing model review. And so, I will be bringing a report to the June library board meeting with the assessment and recommendations based on that. So, just to backtrack a little bit. So, during the meeting that we had with the finance subcommittee, we threw out a lot of ideas. So, what I've presented here is where we landed with reductions that would do the least amount of, have the least amount of impact on the public. One of the ideas that did come up was not filling the deputy CEO, public services manager position. So, this is something that we discussed at length. And just to a brief summary of some of the things that we talked about. So, this position oversees the whole branch team. So, the branch supervisors that we formerly had at each branch location have been phased out as those people retire. So, we're, we have just a couple remaining and we won't fill the supervisor positions as they retire. So, the deputy CEO position supervises all branch staff. So, if we don't fill this position, we wouldn't have a manager overseeing operations for all library branches. So, that means no direct supervisor for 15 employees. We wouldn't have a performance planning or coaching process. We wouldn't have someone, the point person for dealing with interpersonal conflicts between staff members or when things escalate between staff members and members of the public. We wouldn't have a coordinator for branch staff training. We wouldn't have a manager doing timesheet tracking. And while this is a simple thing to do for full-time staff, we have part-time and on-call staff who work multiple locations all across the county, different shifts all the time. So, it is a time-consuming process. We wouldn't have a coordinator for higher staff hiring competitions for all branch staff. We wouldn't have someone available when the CEO is sick or on vacation or away for some reason. So, when there's inclement weather closure for incidents that have escalated and involved police, no point person on the ground for that. And the CEO, myself, would not be able to take time off because there'd be nobody there in that role to make operational decisions. There would also be no project lead for internal projects. So, things like the scheduling, making a regular schedule project that we did this year, no point person for problem solving around health and safety concerns around all of our branches across the county. So, there's some internal impacts of not filling that position. Some community impact, so participation on external committees. So, things like Bookapalooza, the newspaper digitization committee, county service providers network, connections committees, all of these committees that we do participate in, either the deputy CEO or the CEO, without filling this position, we would not be able to continue with that type of work. There would be impacts on our county and municipal colleagues and teams. So, no point person for managing things like when we have to close a branch for multiple days for a carpet replacement, for example, or when an unexpected ceiling leak happens at a branch. So, no one to do all of that coordination with IT and municipal staff. We wouldn't be able to do joint health and safety committee, participation on other things like the cultural services committees. We also contribute to things like the IT projects. So, the digital transformation working group and the records management implementation team. So, we currently have library staff that work on those. And without this position, because we'd have to rearrange workflow in the office, we wouldn't be able to support those types of projects. So, if the deputy position is not filled, service delivery will be significantly impacted. Branch staff can't work without oversight with a supervisor, without receiving guidance and feedback. We won't be at the table for those important community conversations that we are currently a part of. And we won't be able to pursue grants and other fundraising opportunities. We'll have a significant impact. So, those are some examples of reasons why we need to fund this position. That said, I do think that there is opportunities for us to look carefully at the way our staffing model exists right now and to make changes. So, this role is very important, the public services manager deputy CEO. You may have heard at previous library board meetings that we do have a retirement coming up of our collections development coordinator. That is also a very core position within the library team. And we do have internal candidates who are interested in both of these positions. So, if we take a more strategic and measured approach and as on the slide says, do a library staffing model review that is carefully thought out, not a rushed decision. We don't fill, you know, just saying we don't fill a position. We look at the big picture, how things are organized, how the workflow works within the team. Then we can be more strategic about how to tweak positions. It's a more sustainable approach. It's not a knee-jerk reaction in cutting one position because it's open. So, I think it's a strategic time because with doing the review and having someone temporarily act in the role of public services manager and deputy CEO provides a development opportunity for a staff member who is interested in the position. And then, because she would be temporarily acting in the role until the staffing model review is done, it also provides another branch staff member an opportunity to get experience working in the office in the role that she would be temporarily absent from. So, it's kind of taken altogether. It gives us a few months to assess and look at things carefully so that we can make a strategic decision rather than a rushed decision. Let's just see. Blake, could you go to the next slide, please? Okay. So, on this slide, there are a few columns. There's the 2022, 2023, and our draft three, 2024 column. So, our total budgeted revenues from all sources. So, this means things like the provincial government grants that we receive, money coming in from the friends of the library and other types of revenues. So, that's the total across the top. So, in draft three, it is $1,547,230. Now, of that total amount, what we would be requesting from the county tax requisition would be $1,314,801. The county tax requisition as the overall budgeted amount for the library, you can see in 2022, that amount was 88.46%. In 2023, 87.51%. And in 2024, in this current draft three, it is 84.98% of our budget. So, very substantial amount comes from the county levy. In terms of the percentage increase for the tax requisition from the previous year, we did receive some increases in 2022 and 2023. So, we had some positions added. We had a van was, you know, part of our reserve fund spending last year, although that came from reserve, sorry. But we had in 2022, a 9.44% increase. In 2023, an 8.23% increase. And in the version draft three that the library board has put forward in our special meeting on Friday morning, Friday, March 1st, is a 6.5% increase from last year's tax levy request. This represents an increase of $80,298. Now, on Monday, when the agenda package was published to the public, I learned that there was a substantial reduction being put on the table for discussion here today. And so, I understand that what will be a topic of conversation is to remove $115,000 of operational funding from the 2024 library budget. I know that county council is being asked to make very difficult decisions this year. It's a really tough budget year. And I know that many people in our community are really struggling and struggling to pay bills. And I completely understand the, you know, the need not to increase the taxes. But I just want to, you know, make sure that everyone understands that if we are faced with, you know, a really big reduction like that, the library board is going to have some really tough decisions to make. So, with the cut of this level, the things that we're going to be talking about around the library board table are not opening maybe the Dorset branch and closing a couple of branches in Highlands East. Maybe closing Minden and Dicart for a day a week. That would be one example. Another example would be shutting down all branches for over three months. Another example of what $115,000 would look like would be to not buy any additional books or movies or eBooks, to cancel our subscriptions that we have, our digital subscriptions, and not purchasing any more programming materials for the year, including for summer reading club and, you know, movies for kids and that type of thing. We've already done a bunch of spending on collections. So, it would mean we would stop spending with the amount that we've purchased so far this year. So, I just, to make clear, the kind of $115,000 is very substantial. And sometimes the value of library services can be really hard to quantify. It's not, we're not only lending out books, we're doing all sorts of other things. So, the other day, I was at Minden Branch and a patron came in because she was completing an online exam at home. And on her home computer, she had internet at home, but her internet wasn't fast enough. She had to be on a webcam while she did her exam to kind of, you know, prove that she was the one taking the exam and her bandwidth couldn't support it. So, she came to the library and used the computer in Minden, the newest one that had the webcam. And last week, on the day that we had that flash freeze, we had someone in the library who was there doing a job interview on Zoom. And she had come previously to the library to do a job interview on Zoom the week before. It was her second round of interviewing. So, things like that, it's, you know, it's not just about borrowing books at the library, like the value of kids coming during their lunch hour from Wilberforce to the Wilberforce branch and picking up the books that they placed on hold during their class visit. Like who, you know, kids who may not have the resources at home to buy books or, you know, to have, to purchase other things, but they're, you know, coming to the library and getting books at their lunch hour. So, I just wanted to give you a few examples just to really illustrate. The library does bring a lot of value to the community and in particular to people who don't have a lot of money and who are struggling. And for everyone, libraries are there for everyone, but they're one of the last places that we have. You don't have to buy anything. You don't have to pay anything. Everyone is welcome. You're listened to. You can ask questions about anything. You can talk to someone and just, you know, if you're lonely, there's going to be someone there to chat with you. And we have a lot of aging seniors in our community. And that's something really valuable that the library offers. I think I'll wrap it up there. I know you have a really, really tough decisions before you. And, you know, I'm here to advocate for the library. I hope, I wish you well in your deliberations. I think I have a question slide, Blake, at the end. There we go.
Thank you, thank you, Andrea. And thanks for adding the additional information that you've provided to us over and above your slide presentation. And I guess I want counsel just to know that the process we'll follow is to allow any and all questions of Andrea at this point in time. We will then receive her report, then open up discussion about that particular part of the budget so we can vote separately on that. And discuss amongst ourselves, you know, what we want to do with that. So, that removes, if for instance, somebody wants to vote against the library levy, that doesn't mean that you have to vote against the budget overall. You can divide those two. A couple of questions for you before I go to the other members of council. I'm having a little bit of a struggle with the numbers because I understood that the original request on the levy was just slightly over 10%. And I don't know how you got it down to 6.5 because the numbers don't add up for me.
So, our original request, I believe, was 7.43% increase?
Okay. Thanks. Just to clarify, you reduce the per diem money for the board?
Yes.
And that's strictly based on additional activities, but they're still going to receive a per diem?
So, at the special meeting, the board agreed to eliminate that $3,000 for this year. I don't think that that budget line was being used for per diems. I think it was being used when there was, for example, when we did the tour around the different libraries last year. Yeah.
All right. I would look to other members of council with, oh, sorry. There was one other question I wanted to ask. One of the things that, because I know that the greatest part of your budget is dedicated to staffing.
It is.
For the most part. Has the board, and I should know this because I come to some of the meetings, looked very carefully at the list of partnerships that you have? I know that there was a long list of them, anywhere between 25 and 30 partnerships that may have varied somewhat. But I know that those partnerships, although they don't cost the library money, they cost in staff time. And I just want to know that you've looked at that or be assured that you will look at that going forward. And I mean, I know that there's value in all of them. But when you're talking about, you know, taking so much of staff's time to do certain things, I think that's something that you need to look at and prioritizing, you know, that particular area.
Well, that type of work is primarily our programming and outreach coordinator. And that's part of her portfolio. It also, you know, there are a lot of community connections with the deputy CEO and the CEO. That's sort of part of the portfolio. It's true, it does take time. It takes time, but it's investment in our community members. And we're able to provide things that we wouldn't be able to pay for the library ourselves. So, for example, with Pinwa, the maker kits, they, for the science, technology, engineering, arts and math kits, we receive funds from them. They put together the information about the kits. They give us a list of purchases.
Asking was, you know, rather than diving into each one.
Sure, sorry. Just with an example.
Look at your list of partnerships and see where the priorities lie.
We can, and that can be a part of when we do our staffing model review. We can, you know, take a good look at each admin position portfolio, who's doing what in branch staff, who's doing what, and sort of look at a big picture in terms of workflow and priorities.
Questions from other members of council? Go ahead.
It's been a few years since I've been on the county library board. Can you tell me just, just so I understand, the full-time staff you have and what each of them do, just so I have an understanding?
Sure. So, there's my position, the CEO of the library. Then there's the public services manager and deputy CEO of the library. So, the CEO, you know, handles the budget and a lot of external public relations and, you know, things like this. The deputy CEO, public services manager, is the supervisor of all of the branch staff and sort of runs the operations internally. Then we have the collections development coordinator who focuses on purchasing our collection, making sure it's weeded. We have our technology and resources coordinator. So, she handles, you know, all the updates that we do and changes on our website, looking after our e-resources, participates in a lot of committee work to support IT, for example. We have our programming and outreach coordinator. So, she does some programming herself, but she does a lot of program coordination for other branch staff and programming staff, does outreach. For example, she went to a program last week with babies and families with like a postpartum group. We have a marketing communications coordinator and she's part-time. And so, she does things like our posters and our social media. And then we have an admin support coordinator. That's full-time. Well, right now, we have one vacant position. So, it's six full-time and one part-time.
Other questions for Andrea? Councillor Burton?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Would it be possible of interest, I suppose, be the question, to leave the deputy or the public service manager, the deputy CAO, open until you're doing your review in June or July, whenever it is?
Yeah, so that's our intention. So, what we'll do is fill the role temporarily internally. So, we'll give someone a chance to practice in that role. And so, it won't be posted permanently until after the review.
I guess it'd be a hard question to answer, but what effect would that have on our, on public service?
Well, that, I, in previous instances, when there has only been one manager for the library rather than the CEO and the deputy CEO, in multiple cases, it has resulted in. um, in multiple cases, it has resulted in um uh, not a good outcome for the library or for the people in question for health and mental health and wellbeing. Um, I have been in the two roles since mid-October. And um, it's unsustainable for me to continue to do two full-time jobs. It's, it's not feasible. Um, I need a day off. You know, my day, I was, I had a vacation day on Monday. I had family from Quebec. And um, I read the report about $115,000 being removed. And so I like, I, I can't be sick. I can't, um. Yeah, there's no one, there's no one to manage things if I'm not there and I'm worn out, to be perfectly honest.
Other questions for Andrea? Um, one comment I have to make, and, and this is as the, as the mayor of Algonquin Highlands. I can't tell you how disappointed I am to hear the very first thing that would suffer uh from a cut would be Dorset. Um, given the fact that every other library, every other municipality receives 48 to 60 hours of library service and Dorset or Algonquin Highlands receives 12. And that is not right. That's just not right. Now, you don't need to answer me. I'm just telling you that's, that's my position.
Yeah, and, and you just, um, just to say that it would, was an example. So it would be uh for the library board to to talk about and we're excited about Dorset and we really want the branch to open. So it would be hard decisions, no matter where in the county they.
I just noted that it was at the top of your list.
Oh.
Other questions for Andrea? Oh, sorry, uh, councillor McKechnie. Thanks.
Yeah, um, I just want to make emphasize that um, that I come across here that um, the, the councillors and, and the warden and the deputy warden sitting around the table. Uh, we're not here to try to get rid of libraries. We're here representing our municipalities and the County of Halliburton. And to me, we're just concerned about, there's a $1.2 million budget for payrolls. And to, to me, my own self personally, I, I've been around council long enough. I know a lot of numbers. I know a lot of departments work off. So we're not downgrading what you, all the good things you do, but somehow this has got to be um, uh, brought down a little bit as far as I'm concerned in regard to getting it in, in control. It just seems like it's growing and growing and growing. And uh, we have a lot of other issues going on in our community. But uh, I know that the, some people are going to be saying, oh, well, McKechnie said this, that he wants to get rid of libraries. I, I didn't say that. So I'm going to say that one more time. And I don't think anybody around the table wants to get rid of libraries either. But you've got to understand that we uh have to take care of uh, when, when you're elected official, you're there to represent everyone in your municipality and everyone in the county. So thanks very much.
Any other questions or comments for Andrea? Uh, thanks so much, Andrea. I mean, I know this is, I know this is challenging for you. You can hear it, you know, in your presentation. Um, so we appreciate your time and, and your presentation. Uh, could I have a mover in a second or two to receive uh the library delegation? Councillors Shell and Fury?
Be resolved that Halliburton County Council receives from information that proposed draft number three, 2024 library budget presentation.
All in favor? That's carried. Um, we'll now have a bit of a discussion on where we're going to stand with the recommendation that came from the Finance Committee. Uh, the one thing that I, that I would like to maybe suggest that we consider uh as, as a bit of a, a salvo is, is to um go down to the, to reduce the decrease down to uh equal the levy that the library board had last year. Uh, which I'm not sure exactly where that would bring us to, but I think it's in then around 90 as opposed to 115. That's what it would do to our levy. Okay. And reduce the cut to the library down to, was it like it was around 90 something? Just so we know. Sorry, Andrea. We've been asking you to look at an awful lot of numbers lately.
Okay. If council were wanting to bring the library's levy up to the 2023 levy amount, it would be in addition to the draft three that is presented to you today, an addition of $24,452.04 and bring the tax rate increase from 6.17% to 6.28%.
Right, Warden? So that would be the total ask for the library in aggregate number would be which for 2024?
It would be a total levy of $23,286,409.73.
I'm sorry, just for the library. Sorry.
I'm trying.
You ask me these questions?
Yeah, uh, $1,234,502.86.
Councillor Ray? $1,234,502. I think that's what you said.
Correct.
Comments? Councillor Carter?
Well, I think that um, the way all of this is couched, I have to uh start as uh councillor McKechnie said and say that I'm not against libraries. Um, but as I look across the table at me, um, you know, we are looking to take money from the ambulances. We are looking, we have taken money out of the environment in a, in a couple of different ways. We have reduced the amount of money that originally was planned for roads. Um, you know, we've looked at every nickel and dime across the whole um county to try to come up with a, a reasonable tax increase. I don't want to be hypocritical here. Minden Hills is in a very difficult situation this year. Uh, we have not finalized our budget, but our, you know, our numbers are, are, are going to be high. And I'm looking at what the total taxes are for, you know, all the individuals across Minden Hills and, and the county. The fact is, is that the library over the last number of years, it's not a, you know, a thing of looking at what did they get last year and what will they get this year? You know, over the last number of years, they've been able to build up a fairly substantial reserve, oh, well over $200,000, which is, you know, perhaps they were getting more money than they, they actually needed. So I don't think that we can be looking at what was last year and, and, and what's this year. We need to be looking at what's, what is fair. You know, if they are not going to fill one of their senior positions, that's most of the savings, you know, right there. Um, if, if that is going to be defrayed for, for six months or so. Um, you know, there are a number of other areas where look, tough decisions. If I had to make my choice between an ambulance and the library, uh, you know, I like the library and I know it adds to the general, um, you know, health of the community, but I'd rather have the ambulance. Uh, you know, the, these are the tough trade-offs that we have to make. Quite frankly, you know, I'm, I, I felt like compromise that the 115 reduction. Uh, I think that there is more room uh to look at that library budget and they have to look at their total situation. We provide them with funding. We don't tell them how to spend it and how to organize it and so on. But uh, I don't agree with the reducing it beyond the 115.
Uh, I, I really appreciate and thank you for making the comment about the, about the EMS service. Uh, because I, I mean, I know that this is a big hit on the library and there will be a lot of people who will, would be upset should we continue with this recommendation. But I also think about the impact of, of uh reduction in EMS service and, and, you know, looking at the two of them, I, I would agree. The one is much more important than the other. I, I do have to say that our services are, are totally separate from Minden Hills services and you know, we have to look at them as individual things as opposed to one and how it impacts another. But uh, you know, I, I look for other comments about why we, we need to stick to what we're going to do with the library. The library's funding. Uh, councillor Allen, councillor Dayu?
Yeah, the, I understand totally what councillor Carter is saying, and I also respect what councillor McKechnie said. But if I'm understanding correctly, that we have come up with, and I was part of the, looking at the overall budget for for the, for the library, and it's sitting now at 1.314 as an ask. And we're talking about telling them to reduce that by $90,000. Uh, and, and that's fine. Uh, but at the end of the day, where do you get $90,000? And, and I know that Andrea was talking about potential options such as closing two libraries in Hynnesay and possibly not opening one in, in Dorset, which to me is totally unacceptable. Um, but at the end of the day, you're looking at $90,000. Uh, saving a couple of boxes of paper clips is not going to, not going to solve the problem. You're going to have to make some significant cuts to do that. So if, if, if I were to just turn around and say, for instance, and if I'm not mistaken, that would be equivalent pretty well to the levy that they received in 2023. Does that sound about right? Pretty well the same levy as they got in 2020?
The 1.234 million is what they received in 2023.
So it's exactly the same?
Yes.
Okay. So at, at the end of the day, uh, we then have to ask ourselves, and, and I, I ask Gary, if, if all of a sudden we, we took the equivalent of whatever this percentage was, which looks like a big number. I'm not sure, can't count really effectively, but it's not 10%. But it's got to be seven or eight percent, which is equivalent to how much we're in levy our, our taxes. If I were to tell you, you can't raise taxes, how about that?
If I might, Warden, it's, and, and with respect, councillor, it's a bit of an unfair question because we're dealing percentages on a million dollars on versus percentages on $23 million. So it's, it, it's not equitable. I think an equitable comparison would be looking at, and, and Ms. Brown did talk about looking at her staffing numbers, and that's what we did internally to adjust our numbers and our, our levy asking. So we actually looked at filling positions, not filling positions, transitioning senior positions into, into, into frontline positions as a means to maintain or increase levels of service, but also reduce ask. Um, so I, that's the only way I know to answer your question. Um, i- is, is, yes, I mean, from a standpoint of um, there are certain things that drive the increase, the levy ask, but there's also the same time responsibility to look at how do you mitigate that increase? Uh, from an operational standpoint, and that's how we deal with it here internally, as we actually looked at our operational structure and adjusted to compensate for a different, for just reprioritize money. It is, is probably the best way I can, I can look at it. And that, and that's the only way I can, I think I can responsibly answer your question. It's a fair question. I just, it, it's dealing, the percentage wise makes it a little difficult to answer.
Go ahead, councillor Ray.
First off, Gary, I, I totally accept your, 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 your discussion. I, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just proportionate is what we are. Uh, it's like trying to compare us to the city of Toronto. It doesn't work. We, we just don't have the same scope or the same, the same overall demands. And, and so the library board is different than who we are, and, and that's kind of sort of the way it should be. Um, but having said that, um, when we went through and looked at not just the low hanging fruit, but the overall requirements to do the job, they reduced it by $34,000. And that's a significant amount. If you could, if you take that in comparison to what, what, what the county has, it's, it's a high percentage too, in relation to the number they work with, which is roughly what uh 5% of our total. They, they, they've cut a significant amount out. And, and, and the ask is now at 6.5%. What is the average for all the departments asking? Are, are they in that same ballpark? If they are, something's kind of cockeyed because our overall levy is going to be more than seven. So somebody has to be higher than 6.5, even if some are less.
Again, so you're, so again, for me, I don't look at using an overall percentage piece, again, even comparing departments to departments, because public works is so disproportionate to corporate services and EMS to, to IT because percentage is of that value versus the quantum of the money you're talking about. So I, I couldn't give you an exact percentage increase department. We could run the numbers, but I don't think it's a relevant number or a relevant piece to put towards the library ask. I can go back to my original point with respect to um, the prioritization of spending. And it's less about the, the percentage of money being asked for. It's doing the overall evaluation of what is your core service? What does it cost to deliver the core service? And the first response you look at is how do I get to an acceptable number without reduction, without reduction in service, right? And that's what we did internally. And I think that was you know, I think that was part of the discussion we're at right now. Um, and, and we did it in a number of different ways. Um, and I think that's what was being asked of the library. I'm not commenting on, on how they did it, but that was what was being asked. So with respect to the ask, um, I, I guess that's the only way I can answer it. It was I getting into specifics because I'm not here to tell the library how to spend their money. I'm seeing how do we evaluate when it is a finite amount of money and, and it's, it's a cumulative impact on, you know, we do this, this course service because this much and this course of discuss that much. It starts piling up. And you have to decide where does, where is the money best spent? And, and that's, I, I don't think I answered your question, but that's still, yeah.
Yep. You actually did answer your, the question. And, and you answered it in a way that makes sense to me. Because you're talking about the core value of the core services of each department and what they represent and why they're in business. And that's exactly what the library board did because I was part of that, that basic discussion to determine, why are we here? Like, what, what is the purpose of, of the library board? It's core service. And, and at the end of the day, that's exactly what it is. Um, the problem we have is the population is growing. The demand is getting bigger. And to quantify that in, in, in specific terms is kind of hard because you've got seasonal people versus permanent people and they fluctuate back and forth. But to turn around and look at the statistics that says how fast we have grown since the last, last census, we, we were one of the fastest growing municipalities in Ontario. And so some of the, some of what might be considered to be peripheral services, and, and I'm kind of hoping we don't put the library board in that category, but if we do, um, that would only be the opinion of someone who, who, who would prefer to have it spent somewhere else because that is the only uh way that we can keep our number down under a certain amount. But I think it's a core service. I, I really do. To, to, to not have a library board operational, uh, does not make sense. But at the same time, a poorly functioning library board, library service is worse than none at all. Uh, if we're not going to supply the product effectively, then that's it. And, and I'm hearing from, from the CEO of the library board that there, there is a transition period between when one CEO left and one come onboard. You got the learning curve and that's just the way time moves and, and, and changes things while you're planning for it. But at the end of the day, we're going to come up with, if I'm not mistaken, June the 12th with a more finite description of how the library board will operate. It's not that complicated. It's pretty simple. And at the end of the day, what we're basically saying, no, you are going to make that decision now. Because we're to knock 90,000 bucks out of your budget. So you're not going to have any option. Uh, and, and I, as a person who is going to have to vote on this, I will definitely not support a $90,000 cut. That's just not going to happen in my mind.
You, you have to keep in mind that although we might appreciate the fact that there's going to be a review, a review done and received in June, that doesn't help us with our, our budget discussions now. Because I mean, that, we can't hear what impact that might have on the. Because I mean, we can't hear what impact that might have on this year's budget. A couple of comments that I want to make, and then I'll go to Counselor Dayu. In Ms. Brown's defense, I can see that her filling two roles at this present time is not sustainable. It's obvious to all of us that that is not sustainable. And something needs to be done with respect to that, you know, and right away. And I would suspect that you'd really need to look at some delegation for now. It's, I mean, because it's not sustainable the way it is. The second reason, when you talked about core service, that I mentioned partnerships and even programming. The reason I asked for that is to ensure that it is tied to the core services of the library. Are they really core to the libraries or applicable to the core service that the library delivers? That's one of the reasons that I raised that. And the third point I wanted to make is I know that this is a real challenge for four members of council. That you're on the library board, you want to fight for the library, and it's your role to be representative of the library when you're at the library board. Contrary to that, you're here to represent the county council right now and the county council's levy, and you know, it's a struggle. I just wanted to recognize that. And for people in the audience, or anyone who's listening to understand the struggle that's there, it's hard. I know, I've been there, done that. Counselor Dayu.
Thank you. I wish to support the library board's recommended reductions as they stand. And there are a few reasons for that. One is having heard Ms. Brown's account of what she intends to do in the upcoming months to restructure the staff as vacancies are created and natural opportunities happen. I think is a very well thought through, informed way of making hard choices rather than having to rip a Band-Aid off without the the advance support of the thinking and strategizing that goes behind that. And the fact that she is suggesting that she intends to do that, I think is a good indication that from next year, we may be seeing some gains on the budget that are not quite possible this year. Given that she's been in the role for a few weeks, I'd like to say it has not been long to give her the opportunity as CEO to determine where those cuts could be made. So just granting that little bit of extra time, I think is something that any of us in that role would appreciate. I'd also recognize that staffing is a large part of the library budget because that's the bit that has to be refunded year by year, whereas books have a lot slower flush rate, shall we say, of things coming and going. So staffing in a library is always going to be a big chunk. And just like in all of our other departments, there are cost of living expenses, or cost of living increases, benefit increases because that's what we are doing for our people, unionized or non-unionized, given the inflation that's been going on. So in a way, I see that as a fixed increase, which means that one of the biggest chunks of budget for the library is not something that we would be able to really negotiate down. We would have to take that from programming, which is the part that remains. I'd also, I've got a comment slash question about our large library reserves because this might be my misunderstanding, but assuredly someone in the room would be able to help. I get that we've got at the library board, we've got a considerable reserve base. It's not what is usual. From what I understand, a lot of those reserves were built up because of the closures and the lack of programming during the years of COVID. So instead of taking that money and putting it somewhere else, we're putting it aside for a rainy, a rainy day in effect in at library board. We're making sure that our coffers are built up for expenses in the future. Those, hopefully, those sorts of reserves gains are not going to happen again for the same reasons. Hopefully, programming will continue unabated and not canceled for years at a time because of epidemics. And we've got a principle in Algonquin Highlands, and I believe here at county as well, where if you see a temporary savings for a year or two, you don't remove it from the levy. If it is already included in the levy, you keep it in the levy so that you don't have to refund it later on. It's already an expense that has been budgeted for. And my assumption, and this is where I'd be happy to be to be corrected if I'm wrong, but my assumption is a lot of the reserve gain in the last few years has come from programming costs which were not incurred, which in, I guess, in the broader scheme of things, should be looked as at a gain, but not that the, not that the library was overfunded for that time. I think in our municipality, at least, we would keep that in the levy, not reduce it from the levy in those years, knowing that those expenses will rise again once the epidemic is over. So just in case there is a worry that maybe we've been over budgeting for the library, and that's how we've gotten the reserves to the degree that they are now, I don't personally see that as being the case. I think it was more of a blip on that. And the final final piece that I wanted to underscore that has been raised by Ms. Brown and Counselor Ryle and others as well, is how impossible it is to quantify the social return on investment of these softer services in, you know, in a county or in, you know, in any community. If you sit in the library for, you know, for hours at a time, and I know we all have, at some stage, we all have, you see and you hear the conversations of the people who come in, the kids who are coming in and spending time in the library instead of wandering the roads after school and checking out the books and having conversations about homework and having a safe place to do their homework together. You hear seniors who are lonely and who maybe don't have much human contact during the day and who will come in and have a five or seven minute conversation with the person at the front desk. And that third person at the front desk is providing a social service to that vulnerable individual in our community. These things really can't be quantified, and we all know that levels of vulnerability and income insecurity are going up and up and up these years to a terrifying degree, and the library is one of, as Ms. Brown said, one of the final spaces where we as as a county can be there to support individuals who are experiencing vulnerability in their multifarious needs. I, because we can't put a price tag on that, I think we risk that falling off our radar of as something that county council is responsible of and capable of providing to our community members. So for all of these reasons, I do advocate for accepting what the library board is proposing as a cut.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you. So I always understand there was two hundred thousand, pardon me, in reserves currently, Andrea, roughly?
Yeah, just over.
Okay, thank you. What exactly are the library reserves safe for? I listened to what, you know, Counselor Dayu just said. However, you know, something with the plumbing or something breaks at the library, I mean, the county fixes that, that's not going to come out of the reserves of the library, correct? So I understand, you know, the van was purchased, we have that now, but it seems like a lot has accumulated and, you know, blame it on the pandemic or whatever over the past few years, but would it not then be proper for us as council members to request that if not all of it, or at least a lion's share of it, come from the reserves for this year? Understanding that, you know, in different departments, the increases and the requirements each year, it ebbs and flows. Sometimes, you know, roads need more or we needed more ambulances in one year than another. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's only one taxpayer, and this does trickle down to the municipalities and how we as lower tier municipalities have to develop our tax increases as well. And I don't know, I mean, I know at Minden Hills, we're seeing one of the largest tax increases that we've ever seen, and that's just to continue to maintain the service delivery that we currently offer. I think this is our rainy day, and I think it's time to possibly use some reserves for this.
I, I thank you for that, Counselor Shell. You know, I mean, we're all, I think we're all experiencing higher, you know, increases than we've ever done before, and it's tough. It's been my understanding that the reserve fund that the library has had in the past has always been used strictly for capital purchases. And the only capital purchases that they've really had to make has been photocopiers. And this is, it is an extraordinary amount. And it is there to be used, and you know, I like that compromise position that you put forward. I see Counselor Fury, and you have your hand up, or you're just thinking? Okay, then, Counselor Ryle.
Well, to me, taking it out of the reserve is a short term gain and maybe for long term pain, I'm not sure. But if there is a service review going on, you know, there's such things as, is the IT a full-time position? And can that be done here at the county level more reasonably? We need to look at the options here. Like, I see five full-time staff there and a part-time. I don't know what they all do, and I'd sit down sometime, like to understand that. But anyway, if, if that's what you have to do to do it this year, but the hope is that you're going to see a savings with your view. If not, it's not sustainable. You can't keep doing it every year because we're going to be back with the same questions next year. So I think it's, it is a possibility to get us by this year.
Counselor Ryle. Then Counselor Dayu.
Yeah, the thing of it is, is that Warden Danison's point was well taken. When you sit on a board and then you're responsible for determining how that board is, excuse me, if you sit on the board of a function and then you have to decide how much money that function is going to get, it makes it very complicated, and I can understand that. The good news is, is I've been doing a lot of that over my lifetime, and I compartmentalize pretty easy. The people behind me are unbelievably I can't describe the quality of the people that are behind me and the way that they have put together their budgets. The way, the passion with which they did it, the sharpness of the pencils that they used led me to believe at the end of the day that we made the right decisions with those departments. When I look at Andrea and what Andrea Brown has done with her department, I see absolutely no difference. Zero difference between the way she approached it and the way the people behind me approached it. So the integrity of the budget is what it is. It ain't pretty. It's as ugly as they come. But at the end of the day, it's what it is. And I am not in favor of using reserve money for operation costs. And the reason for that is we're going to spend seventy thousand dollars on wages this year. And then where are we going to get the money next year? Because wages are going up. So we're going to end up with a catch twenty-two, and at some point in time, if we think the increase of six and a half percent is bad this year, if we subsidize the wages, what's it going to be next year? Because the wages are going up. We all know that. So you're not going to have six and a half percent next year. You could be have eight or nine percent because we chose not to do anything this year. So I argue it from the fiscal point of view because that's what all of us are sitting here for. I'm not, and I compliment Counselor Dayu because she's a people person, which I wish I was more, but I'm not as much. But I look at it from the point of view that if you do not properly maintain it, it will break. And if it breaks, it has absolutely no value. In fact, it's a deterrent. So I would, I would accept what has been presented to us by the CEO of the library board. And I would hold her accountable for what is going to happen on June the twelfth. At which point in time, we can then make a decision on what we're going to do come up in twenty-five. Twenty-five is not a pretty year. Everything I'm hearing across the board for everything. Twenty-four is a cakewalk compared to what twenty-five is going to be. So I, again, I'm one who would like to stay strictly with what the board has asked for and approve it.
I think what Counselor Shell was offering was a stopgap measure and a bit of a solution to a difficult position that we're in right now in anticipation of seeing some positive results from the review that Ms. Brown says she's going to do. Counselor Dayu, and then Counselor Burton.
Yeah, the way you just described it, Warden, is how I understood it, and I do support that idea because if we can anticipate those savings later on, then this could, yeah, this could be a really interesting stopgap measure. Of course, should the library board see it that way, who are in control of the reserves, but I really value that idea. And the other, the other comment that I wanted to make on the back of Counselor Shell's remarks was when she spoke of how it costs us so much more to maintain services this year, and it is for all of us across the county without any exception. The gentle reminder that what we're proposing from the library board is actually to infant services this year. So it's not, it's not only trying to maintain what we've got. We will be providing more services to more people in a larger catchment area of the county with the ask. It's not status quo.
Counselor Burton.
I just wanted to say that I certainly agreed with the compromise that Counselor Shell had come up with, and I think it would do us well to exercise that.
Okay, other comments on that? Oh, Counselor McKechnie, my apologies.
No problem. You know, like, we're sitting here and needless to say, a lot of different opinions. But, and I think that I know I've said this before, but I really am a big, a big person in regard to getting things in the proper priority. I think we've done a great job over the years funding the library board. I think that it's time for it to just go on hold here for a second. We've got, like, I know there's problems coming in DICEART at the library board that are not in the library board. They're out on the patio at the back. We're going to probably have to hire some more bylaw officers to get rid of the people that are there. I mean, this, this is a and every one of our services, whether it's CMS, our roads, we've passed our budget in DICEART. Well, Murray and I, we're getting calls every day about something that we haven't forgotten about it. They're bad. And of course, it's an off winter. We got bridges coming up, our healthcare. I mean, all we're trying to do here is just get this thing under control, but you just can't, can't keep adding ten percent, ten percent to a library board right now when it's already, as far as I'm concerned, got a great budget to work with. We're just asking them to kind of hone it down a bit. So we can maybe regroup here in a year.
Counselor McKechnie, what's your thoughts on the, on the suggestion that the reserves be used to fund the, to assist funding for the library this year?
I don't, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I don't really, it's not that I don't care. But I think it's just putting a Band-Aid on it because it's just, you know, the next year, they're going to add another ten or fifteen percent on. Like, I think we're just trying to get their attention that they have one point two million for salaries right now. Like, restructure it. Like, it's, right now, we have to start looking at a lot of these areas. And so I would, maybe not using, of course, we wouldn't use it all, but it was going to help out a bit to get through till, for this trying period, but I just, I can't emphasize enough, we're just, we're really trying to be responsible to all our taxpayers and we're talking a lot of money here. It's a great library system we've got, but we have some major, major priorities in our county and all our municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shell and Counselor Carter.
I just want to establish that I've never been that member of council who has said we should use reserves most years in a budget for something that I didn't think should be put into reserves. However, there's two hundred thousand dollars in this reserve that is continuing to accumulate that I don't really see a place where it's going to be going in any near future. Because if there is a catastrophe at the library, once again, it's not coming out of that reserve, it's coming from the county. So considering that there's two hundred thousand dollars there for things like photocopy, photocopiers, I think that the library reserves can be depleted for this year, and I don't see how that will affect any kind of wages or increases for next year because we're already partly through the year and we still don't even have the deputy. But anyway, that's just my opinion. I just wanted to reiterate that I'm not that member of council that ever thinks we should deplete reserves for things, but this is a completely different scenario, in my opinion.
Well, you've all heard me ranting on about reserves over and over and over again, and I don't disagree with you. Mr. Cao, and then we'll go back over to.
So I just want to, a process stamp on it very clear. So from the council's perspective, our authority is limited to how much So from the council's perspective, our authority is limited to how much the quantum of the levy is. We can't tell the library board to use reserves. My hope was, would be that a decision is made on whatever the number is. The library board would look at all options versus elimination of service as part of the deliberation if the number is reduced. Use levies or whatever the case may be. So from the standpoint of very good conversation, but county council doesn't have the authority to tell the library board to use a reserve in place of a levy. So that's a, that's a decision. Granted, yes, there are foreign members of county council on the library board, but that's a decision. Five, excuse me, that's a decision of the, of the library board.
Counselor Carter, then back to you, Counselor Rayal.
Yeah, I think the situation is, is that we're looking for how much money we are going to be spending on the library. The, the, the issue on the reserves just, you know, it's, it's just a fact. And when we're looking at the assets or the number of branches or the number of people or whatever it is. You know, and it's, it's a very good point that, you know, reserves, you know, for the rainy day in general for fixed assets and so on. The library doesn't have that many fixed assets. They have, they have their, their books and some equipment and, and so on. All of the buildings belong to the municipalities. And all of the expenses are going with the municipalities. So there's no need for a reserve for that area. So large reserves are, are simply probably just not required or warranted. You know, it's a balancing act. And it's it, you know, it's, it's a balancing act that when we look at, we have one taxpayer. And whether that taxpayer is in Minden or Algonquin Highlands, yeah, there's certain differences because of the split between the municipality and the, and the county. But we have one taxpayer. And, and that taxpayer, we ask them for funding for a number of different things. Paying for all the infrastructure and fire and waste management and so on, so forth. And then there's all the, if you will, the discretionary things, the cultural things, the sports things, the library things. You know, all, all of those are, are somewhat discretionary. And you have to look at trying to find your balance. You know, yes, there is a, a social benefit to library. And there, there's a, you know, maybe a health benefit to having, you know, soccer teams. You know, there's, there, there are a lot of things that we have to balance. And it's, it's just certainly seems to me that, you know, this is an area where we have to be able to say, we're not trying to cut out libraries. And it, it, it's, you know, I've been at both sides of these budget equations for 50 years. And I, I understand that, you know, the first thing you say when your budget is threatened is that you'll have to cut back services and close buildings and throw people out on the street and make them homeless. You know, this is, these are exaggerations. But they, you know, they go to the point of, you know, you sometimes have to look at your total structure. You have to look at, you know, what, what people you have, how you're organized and when you're open and all sorts of things like this. Now, they are, the, the library has said that they are going to be doing this in June. And I applaud them for that. But the fact of the matter is, is that if we've got vacant positions right now and we have one, you know, fairly expensive vacant position and which will probably not be filled for this, you know, six months. Well, there's a huge chunk of money right there. You know, we have the other savings that, that they have suggested that they have. You know, I submit however it happened, they've been overfunded for the last number of years. And, and we've been able to do it because, you know, at the county, our, our levies have not been that high. You know, it's been able to fit in. Now we're, now we are up against it. You know, we can't go to the taxpayers for, for, forever. And we're making compromises on, you know, healthcare and on roads. And, you know, everybody's got to, everybody's got to participate. Not suggesting that, you know, we're closing, closing the libraries, but we have to have a realistic number. And, you know, they have some assets and they have some plans and they, you know. I think the only way that people will really live up to meeting the challenge is that if they, if their budget is limited, we can't expect that, you know, oh, it'll be better next year. We do it now and force the issue. If the issue is terrible, we adjust it next year.
Counselor Rayal.
Yeah. I, it's, it's, it's kind of a tough road to hold because of where we are. But I, I do want to address how some of the reserves are being used. And, and I, I, when I sit as a board member, I strongly support what I'm about to say. But when we're trying to open Dorset. We took $71,500 out of reserves to assist them in, in getting the place operational. We then took another $20,000 to, to assist them with the Dorset collection of stuff that's going to go in there. You add that up, that's $91,000. So at the end of the day, that's not photocopiers. That's not, that's not anything. That is a community that needs a library. And if we do not come forward, and again, I'm speaking as a board member now, not, not as a council member. And I apologize for doing that. It would have made it almost impossible for Dorset.
Actually, you're kind of stepping out of your role here. You're supposed to be speaking as a member of county.
Well, I realize that, but we, we, we talked about the fact that, that, that the reserves are not being possibly used properly is what I'm addressing. And, and council has basically said, well, it, it, it's, it's one of those things that, in my mind, I have no problem taking a portion of the reserves if that's what we want to do. But if it's $90,000, that's like an, an all wrong number.
Where, where's the $70,000?
It's under line R1 of the budget.
That does not tell me where it is.
What do you mean, tell me where it is?
What is it? What's the $70,000 for that you're taking out of reserves?
I had it a minute ago and then I lost it. It's Dorset. For Dorset.
For the furniture.
Yep, and all the stuff that went with it.
Books?
Yeah, for setting up operations. So there's, there is furniture that belongs to the library. There's tech and there are books. There are an awful lot of books to purchase.
This is the first time I've heard about books. I just understood we were taking money out of the reserves or that the library was taking money out of reserves for furniture. Because that's capital. Books.
So I thought the municipalities paid for the furniture and they.
Well, in this case, because this is a new situation, we did, Algonquin Highlands and the library board struck a bit of a deal because we're spending X amount of dollars preparing the space for them. That is over and above what's normal and that they would look at, at covering the cost of the furniture only in this circumstance. Now, I know that that's different than what's been done in the past because there's been all kinds of fundraising done and the municipalities were, are responsible for the furniture. But in this case, there was a bit of a deal struck and we hadn't heard any, what that amount was yet. And, and I understood that there, we, Algonquin Highlands had not heard. And there's, there had been some suggestion that we might have to pay for part of that. But because of the reserve amount of money that, that the library had, it seemed like a reasonable deal and everybody agreed that that's what we would do in this case. No, I mean, everybody, the library board and, and Algonquin Highlands. But books were not part of that equation. Books coming out of reserves. Books don't, haven't come out of reserves. They've come out of their operating funds.
Well. If you look at E1, you'll see that $20,000 is being moved from, to, to cover reserves. For, for books for DICEART, for Dorset. I, I don't, this is, like, it's not the conversation that I'd like to have. That was a decision that was a good decision. It was made at the time because it made the right sense to do the right thing. So you were talking about, we could have, we could have asked the, the county for that money. We could have tried to get it somewhere else, but it didn't exist. So we chose to put $20,000 out of reserves into that particular project because it made sense. It was a one-time expenditure. So, so the board is looking at how it manages its reserves. So it's not a question of, of determining. Are they properly allocating their reserves? They, they are managing them. They grew for whatever reasons, really no longer important. They, they are what they are. But now the question becomes, how do you spend that reserve? And, and if we're going to spend that reserve on an operating cost, which, which I kind of not too comfortable with, but nevertheless, if that's the decision of council, I'll go with it. But we got to remember in 2025 that that's what we did. And when the number goes up in 2025, do we want to pull it from reserve again?
But if there's a review being done, that's going to realize some savings.
Possibly. But I'm, I'm, my question is $90,000. Is that, is it going to be $90,000? If so, I want to hire her working for me. Because this ain't going to happen.
I beg your pardon. You want to hire who because what?
Well, if, if, if we expect the board to come up with $90,000 in savings, to me, that's a big ask. I, I just don't think that's a reasonable number to come up with. That's, that's over one complete person for sure. But at the end of the day, if we wanted to, to, to take some of the money out of reserve as a stopgap, I would have no problem with that. And, and again, the report card will be issued on, on, on June the 12th.
Counselor Fury.
Well, first of all, I think that's a slippery slope that you set quite a precedent there. Next time we need a new roof, Bob will be calling the library board for their reserves. Anyway, if you took 90,000 out, what, what's left in the reserve? 132?
Yeah, we currently have about 215, I, I'd say in their reserve.
Well, there was all, there was $300,000 in reserves. Anyway, I'm, I, I, I hope, I think you set it quite a precedent there, to be honest with you. That's not what the board does. But anyway. I, I think that, Andrea, do you want to say something? But I'd like to second, get Lisa to move that and see where we stand on the, take, let's, let's leave the budget where it is and do the review and see, see if we can find the savings. If we can, there's some savings already because it's February, March, rather.
And take the shortfall out of reserves.
Yeah, and take the shortfall out of reserves. No, we can't. So we'll pass the budget the way it is. Yeah, but I like your idea, so.
Can we just hear from, from Andrea?
I, I just wanted to add to that conversation. We haven't finalized our year-end for 2023 yet. We're currently working on that. Right now, though, the library is sitting with a large surplus. And so we'll be adding probably close to $70,000 to the reserve at the end of 2023.
That's, that's a missing piece, thank you.
Not, not that I would typically recommend operational items to come from reserve.
Okay, we, is there any other comment or argument that anybody wants to make at this point? Because I think we've kind of been going around, Walton and then Counselor Dayu.
I'll just be short and quick.
Counselor McKechnie.
Yes, I think I'll, I'll be short, sweet, but because I think I'm kind of repeating myself, but I just can't get my head around like, like last year's 23 was one, basically, $1,235,000. That was the budget for library last year? Is that correct? Or, yeah. And why can't we just put a freeze on that for this year? Just because we're, we're, we're taking a hard look at, at a lot of different areas in, in our budgets this year. We all are. So, I mean, if, if that's, we're not, we're not taking anything away from them. I mean, I mean, to, to me, that's a lot of money. So, thank you.
Counselor Dayu.
Question for Andrea, is it possible to identify where the surplus is? It has come from, my guess is because we've been missing either a CEO or a deputy that a big chunk of it is, is saved from that because it's been since October, I think. So that's five or so months.
I, I don't have the detail in front of me. I just looked at the summary quick while we were sitting here, but I can provide that back to the committee if you, or to the council if you'd like. But I, that would be my assumption also.
Right. It, but either way, it transfers over into this year for, for whatever it needs.
And, and that, if I may, yeah, absolutely. And I think that's great. I think that helps us in our conversation. But I don't want there to be a sense that it's because we over budgeted for the library last year. This is because there have been, you know, a gap in.
I don't think anybody thinks that. Just. One last time, Counselor Rayal.
Yeah, I would, I, I would, if, if that is correct and, and we do end up with a surplus of $70,000. I totally agree now that, that, that added to the 123 puts us back up to $200,000 in, in, in reserves. I, I would, based on that number, if that is close to it, I, I would now be able to support a, a reserve transfer on the understanding that, that it, 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 it may have to be reevaluated in 2025.
Counselor Burton.
Flip-flopping a little bit, but should we go back to our 115 again?
No. This will come to a vote. This is just.
Okay.
Counselor Burton's speaking at the.
I wonder if we should go back to the 115 from the 90.
Oh, I see. I, oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. Okay, we, we need to, you know, come to some resolution here on, on. Counselor Fury has suggested that, that you put that forward as a motion, Counselor Shell. And we'll see how we make out with that unless I'm seeing, Counselor Carter, do you have a comment that you want to make before we wrap up?
Yeah, just, again, we cannot tell the library what to do. We can only set their budget.
Do you want to put a resolution for it?
Well, I, the resolution that we started with was the 115 reduction. And I would, I would move that if somebody is willing to second it.
And, and, and it's, it's subject to the discussion that you've heard. And all the board members have heard. Is there a seconder? Counselor Fury. Just as, as the CAO was doing some calculations, Counselor Carter, I'm sorry, Counselor Dayu. Like, we've already gone around and made all, if you've got something new that you want to add, go for it.
Yes, I, I have a question. And that is if we disagree with the 115, but we would like to, if I would like to move that we maintain it at 90, what would the process be? Do we do the round at 115, see the vote and then do another round?
Correct.
Is that, is that?
If the first one fails.
Fails, okay, got it.
Can I, can I ask a recorded vote?
Sure, absolutely. You can ask for a recorded vote at any time.
So I've, I've rounded the number so Ms. Robinson can explain and get me from crawling. So the motion will be, be resolved, the Halliburton library levy for 2024 be set at 1.2, 1.2 million dollars. I rounded up off that. That includes the 115, $115,000 decrease. And further, that the proposed levy be included as part of the 2024 County Halliburton operating budget. That was moved by Counselor Carter and seconded by Counselor Fury.
So we've had, been asked for a recorded vote if you want to take that. Any, any more discussion on the resol, on the resolution? Okay. Counselor Shell.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Dayu.
No.
Counselor Fury. Counselor McKechnie.
Yes.
You, you needed to have your microphone on, Counselor Fury.
Counselor Fury. Counselor McKechnie.
Yay.
Counselor Burton. Sorry, you have to be Warden Burton. Counselor Rayal.
Nay.
Counselor Shell.
Yay.
Warden Danielson.
Yay.
Counselor Carter.
Yay.
Motion carries six to two.
Thank you. And I know that recognizing that that was a difficult and challenging discussion for us all. Okay, next on the agenda is the budget update and Ms. Robinson will take the floor.
Okay, well, not too much more to report to council. As you are aware, Counselor Carter, Counselor Ferry and Warden Danielson met with myself and the CAO. uh, myself and the CIO to discuss, uh, further reductions in the budget. Uh, I have included my report that, um, further reductions proposed are the removal of one EMS supervisor, which is a decrease of just over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and the removal of the food cycler program, which, uh, is eighty-three thousand dollar decrease. Uh, those two decreases along with the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the overall library budget um, brings the twenty twenty-four total levy to twenty-three million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, uh, and the tax rate increased to six point one seven percent. We are also, um, still including the creation of a one percent or two hundred and twenty thousand dollar dedicated capital levy reserve uh, with our resolution today.
Questions? Counsel Carter.
Just, uh, so I know does, does the seven, well, the six point one seven plus one, so seven point one seven, is that taking into account the impact growth? Have you already built that in?
Yes.
Thank you.
So with the total, with, with the creation of the one percent, uh, for capital reserve, that, that brings us to seven point one seven.
Correct.
Um, other questions or comments on where we stand at the present time? Uh, Counsel Royale and Counsel Dye.
Just one, and that's in relation to the fact, like, I, I totally accept the budget with the exception of that one line. And I certainly am not interested in holding up a budget because of one line.
That's why we asked for a separate vote on, on the, the library's allocation.
Okay, because I want to go on record that I don't agree with that, but I do agree with everything else we've done. So.
Yeah, so the reason we split it two ways, so the, the, the recorded vote on the library, um, will be part of the minutes. So it'll show who supported it and and then the, the motion was carried into, add to the total budget. So yes, you can do both. You've already voted against the one motion for the library, but the budget now, the vote on the total budget is, is a separate motion.
Counsel Dye.
Um, I have a question about the, uh, supervisor position, um, for the ambulance, and I've got a comment on food cycler. That maybe the comment first. When I look back in the reports presented to council on the, the rationale behind the food cycler, we were given, um, one of the rationales given was with the return on investment, and it's just two lines, and I'd just like to read it to remind us, uh, return on investment. Waste management costs in the municipality of Dice Art, which is just an example, um, are currently two hundred and eleven dollars per ton using the estimate of a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a ton for managing waste across all our municipalities. The five hundred units distributed in the county in two twenty-three will save, um, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred to two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in waste management costs. The total county investment was eighty-three thousand dollars, um, for a hundred and fifty dollar per unit subsidy. So, uh, in, in my way of thinking, and I know this is not perfect math, there's no way we can quantify the actual savings. Um, the idea behind the food cycler is to spend a little bit upfront so that we get longer-term savings both in this year and in future years, as we build this into our mentality in, across the community alongside other ways of composting and other ways of getting organic wastes out of our landfill or stopping them from putting, being put into their landfill. So, for me, the end goal has savings attributed to it, which exceed the savings we would make by pulling it out of the budget this year.
Those are not savings for the county though. They're lower-tier savings.
They're savings for the ta, well, for the taxpayer. Like, ultimately, it's the same tax bill.
Comment. Counsel Carter.
One of the things that, um, uh, that was part of the funding was that the, the company was requesting funding from the federal government and they needed to get a subsidy from us in order to get that funding from the federal government. Uh, from what I've learned is that they were turned down by the federal government. Okay, so the, the subsidy on, from the, the federal government is not there. The second thing is that, on experience, we are seeing, uh, because we had a program in Minden Hills, I think, as Dice Art, we are seeing these units showing up in the waste. Um, you know, so I think perhaps the suggested savings may not be what they had projected. You know, a lot of people that, you know, we have one, um, talking to a lot of people that, uh, you know, have them, you know, that they're not finding it as, as, as useful as they, they thought. The expense of things, uh, including the carbon filters and so on, is more than they had anticipated. So not really certain that these units are, are altogether that successful. Maybe they are a bit, maybe they aren't, but in terms of, you know, looking at our funding for this year for the county and how much we would have to spend, you know, this was, this seemed like one that, you know, we're, we're not guaranteed the payback. And so, you know, it, it's something that may have had to be sacrificed.
Counsel Furry.
I'd just like to say, I think whoever put the stats out about the savings were the company that were making them. Check it out.
Um, I think that you had a two-part comment and you didn't make your second point.
Uh, it's about the ambulance services, so I'm happy to wait if, uh, you wanted to.
Go ahead and make it now.
All right, um, so my, my comment would be with the reduction of two supervisors to one, what is, what is the impact on, on staff? And, and our ability to provide those services without people having to put in massive amounts of overtime? Like, it, it can, can we do it?
That's right. Oh, that, I'll just make one brief comment and then the chief can, can speak directly to that, but it is an increase of one. We currently have none, so it is, it actually is an increase of, of one supervisor position, but I allow the chief to make comments with respect to operational aspects of.
Keeping in mind that the report, Rick, that, that the overall report, the review that was done on EMS service suggested that we have four supervisors, not two. Uh, and I suspect that the conversation that the chief has listened to in the last hour and a half has been somewhat painful, given that, you know, the, uh, cut in his budget as well. Uh, did you want to speak to this at all, uh, Chief Wade?
Warden Danielson, members of council, thank you. Brief opportunity, I'll try and make it brief. Um, yeah, ideally, um, if you look at four supervisors, that's one person because it's a twenty-four-seven service, right? So you need four supervisors to provide that frontline on-road supervision twenty-four hours a day. The idea was starting with two was to, um, uh, to phase in this, to have minimal, uh, you know, a, a small effect in the tax levy as we can. Two would give us seven days a week, twelve hours per day. Um, with the exception of vacation time and sick time. Um, with just one, it means that there'll be several days without a supervisor at all for the, uh, for any time during the day. So what it does, it does add the additional on-call time for, um, myself and management, um, as we assume on-call after once a week, every three weeks. So for once a week, I work all week and then I'm on call after hours, uh, including that weekend. So those weeks, it's like working twenty-four hours a day for seven days, but, um, the, uh, yeah, the, and the other thing is with, we'll have to be very creative in how we can staff one supervisor, just because we need to be able to have that supervisor interacting with all the crews rather than just with assigned crews per that schedule. So if you, if you understand what I'm sort of saying, it's, um, if you put them on the schedule with Platoon A, they're always only going to see Platoon A. So if you had two, you would, you would divide them between the two sides of the, of the staffing. But with one, we'll have to be creative to, to do that. So that's, yeah, so that's my two cents worth if there's any questions.
Questions for Chief Wade. Counsel Furry.
It was an understanding, though, that we're partway through the year, that you'd get the second one in the next budget. At least that's the discussion I heard, so. Besides, you'd be doing it all yourself now, haven't you?
Yes. Um, Counsel Carter.
I think further to, uh, Counsel Furry, you know, hopefully the, next year, we're doing the budget a little earlier than this year, and this year is, was extraordinary circumstances because of the union negotiations and so on. So hopefully, you know, we can be reviewing this in, you know, six months, which gets us into that October, November timeframe, and perhaps we can get another person as early as, you know, the beginning of the next calendar year. So, I mean, that would be, that would be ideal. And look at it, it sucks that we have to cut that we have to cut things out of the budget, but, you know, there's that's, the, uh, there's, there was not many other places to cut, unfortunately.
No, true enough. Uh, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, that, you know, we heard hardships to the CEO for the library and, and if we were, you, you know, I mean, Chief Wade could make a much stronger argument about how much, you know, this impacts him personally and, uh, and I believe, uh, Mr. Young as well. Um, yeah. Counsel Furry, did you have another comment? Okay, um, any other questions on, uh, what's being proposed for the county's budget? Thank you, Chief. Any other comments about where we stand? Counsel Carter.
Can we, um, sorry, I'm just trying to word it carefully for a public meeting here. Um, the, uh,
We're beyond that.
Yeah. No, but, uh, we have a large portion of, uh, of the budget is wages. And of course, we're in negotiations right now, so just to feel assured or reassured that the number in our budget is, will be sufficient to cover off any finalized negotiations.
Fewer, yes, that's correct. So the, we, the, that is covered in this budget.
Any other?
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments? Oh, Counsel Furry?
Ready to move a resolution that we adopted, budget.
Uh, second or? Counsel Carter.
Be, uh, be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives the March sixth, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four budget update and budget approval request staff report, and further that the twenty twenty-four operating capital just be adopted as presented. And further that a one percent dedicated capital reserve be established and that motion R three thirty, twenty twenty-three be rescinded as a result of the food cycler program being removed from the twenty twenty-four budget.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. I thank you, uh, Madam Director. Uh, I, I would like to make a point too, that, uh, that our Director of Corporate Services has also been doing dual duty. Um, and I, and I think, you know, based on your comment, that maybe we could get a, a little bit of a, a more lead time on next year's budget. We'll have different staffing measures in place. Uh, our CIO will have been here beyond like, it, rather than starting in November, that we'll be in a lot better position to, to have more time, uh, dedicated to, to where we'll stand for two thousand and twenty-five. And, and thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this. Much appreciated. Sorry, just give me one moment. Um, we, we have a resolution with respect to the, uh, budget year. Um, if you want to speak to that, Andrea. Uh, Municipal Act Regulation two eighty-four oh nine.
Uh, yes, this is a regulation under the municipal act, um, that the county is required to report of amortization post-employment benefits and solid waste, uh, landfill closure and post-excl, sorry, post-closure expenses uh, are included in our budget. Uh, I have outlined in my report, uh, what is and isn't included within the county budget to satisfy this regulation.
Are there any questions on that report? Uh, hearing none, could I have a mover and a second or two receive it? Counselors Dye and Carter.
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the March sixth, twenty twenty-four staff report on municipal regulations, two, two eighty-four oh nine. And further that the report on municipal act regulation, two eighty-four oh nine, twenty twenty-four budget year be, be approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, could I have a mover and a second or for the confirming bylaw? Counsel Royale, Counsel Shell.
Be it resolved that bylaw forty-two thirty-one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the March sixth, twenty twenty-four special meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, and finally, a motion to adjourn. Counsel McEckney, seconded by Counsel Carter.
Be it resolved that the March, uh, sixth, twenty twenty-four special meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned at two fifty-six P M.
All in favor? That's carried.